Good evening. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting isn't properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being recorded, video recorded, as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel Two. Please note customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communications can have this program in high definition on Channel 1002. You can also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire TV on the Go Vegas app. The Planning Commission meeting, as well as other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV in the web. The Saturday of the meeting at 10:00 a.m., Monday at midnight, and the following Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Chair Cherry.
Present.
Vice Chair Quinn, excused. Commissioner Schlotman.
President.
Thank you. Commissioner Toussaint.
Present.
Commissioner Roush.
Present.
Commissioner DeSalvio.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions in the appeal and review process. If appropriate, on each side of the podium, there are some agendas for anyone to grab. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of any time a single speaker, of any single speakers allowed, may be limited. Anyone like to come up for anything? Okay. All comments made on this item for specific action will be cross-referenced to those items on the agenda. Anyone like to be heard? Seeing no one, we will move on to item number five. Our housekeeping items. Are there any commissioners, or any items that commissioners, staff, and applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action? Does anyone wish to speak on any of these items? If yes, note, and allow discussion to determine if they should stay on their housekeeping items to be heard as scheduled. Anyone like to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Nathan Taylor, 8414 West Farm Road, requesting that we obey item number 23 until the November 27th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting, as Commissioner Quinn is not here this evening, and this is in her ward. Thank you.
That was item number 23?
Twenty-three. Yes, sir.
And you asked for a 30-day, was it 30, or another?
Yes, I guess to the November 27th Planning Commission meeting.
November. Okay.
And for the Clerk's office, I have a formal request here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, staff also has on the housekeeping items, item number 17, SUP 74127. The applicant has requested that this item be held in abeyance to the December 11th Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, and that is the first request of that item? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so we have two items. Commissioner Toussaint, can we have a motion on the housekeeping items?
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the housekeeping items, including number 23, to the November 27th meeting. Please cast your votes.
And, I'll vote before, yeah.
Thank you. And that motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda, the consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. For items number six and seven, Commissioner Toussaint, can we get a motion?
Move to approve items six and item seven on the consent agenda.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes.
And Commissioner Schlotman would like to cast a yes vote.
That motion carries. Moving on to the one motion, one vote, the following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Director?
Mr. Chairman, my apologies. So, items six and seven are final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item number eight, SUP 74245, applicant DTM, what was that? Yeah, applicant on an action for special use permit for proposed 2,024 square foot tavern limited establishment use with a 150 square foot outdoor patio at 450 Fremont Suite 167, Ward Five. Staff recommends approval. Item number nine, SUP 74291, applicant Joe Kane, owner Great Wash Park LLC, for possible action request for a special use permit for proposed 1,832 square foot restaurant with a service bar, use with 1,141 square feet of outdoor seating area at 410 South Rampart Boulevard, Suite 120, Ward Two. Staff recommends approval. I will open up the public hearing for this, on these items. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, through you, item number eight, SUP 74245, move to approve. One motion, one vote, okay. And number nine, SUP 74291, move to approve both items.
Thank you, Commissioner Toussaint. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote.
Please, uh, yes, vote, Commissioner Schlotman.
Noted, thank you. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, both of those items, eight and nine, are final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Okay, moving on to the public hearing items. Item number 10, abeyance re-notification, SUP 73907, applicant Freddie Wong for owner Tag Centennial LLC et al., for possible action request for a special use permit for proposed 5,030 square foot restaurant with alcohol use with a waiver to allow zero-foot distance separation from a childcare facility where 400 feet is required at 5760 Centennial Center Boulevard, Suite 110. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed use would be located within a well-established commercial center that includes several restaurants that offer alcohol beverage service that is equal or two or more intense than the proposed restaurant with alcohol use. Therefore, staff recommends approval as the use can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. Lucy Stewart, 1930 Village Center Circle, representing the applicant, and we appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. This is a sushi restaurant. He has a couple other ones in town. Just to clarify, we did actually have a neighborhood meeting last month. Nobody showed up, but we did hold it. So, with that, we would respectfully request your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is noticed as a public hearing, and if anyone from the public would like to be heard in this item. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Turn it over to the Commission for Discussion. Commissioner DeSalvio?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move for approval on this abeyance item, SUP 73907, item number 10, for approval.
Before, sorry, Commissioner DeSalvio, I see Commissioner Roush's light on. I want to make sure I get to it. I apologize.
Thank you. I didn't want to jump the gun on this. I just wanted to have a comment, please.
Sorry about that.
And I am very respectful, Commissioner DeSalvio, that this is in your ward, so I promise I won't try to obscure anything or obstruct anything, but could the applicant, Lucy, please tell me, did you meet with the childcare facility, and what is their reaction to this?
No, but we did send notices for the neighborhood meeting, and no comment. I had my phone number, my email, so, and those weren't, there were like three letters in opposition, but two were from the same person.
So, are, is staff confident that the childcare facility got a notification? Just making sure, please.
The property owner would have gotten the notification. If this is a tenant within the staff, they would not have. And if this is the health club, and there's a childcare element to the overall health club, I'm not sure if that's a separate operator from the health club that's there, but once again, it would go to the property owner.
So, it's not actually a childcare facility? It's a health club with a childcare facility in it?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay. Based on staff's comments, I wasn't able to quite ascertain that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Roush. Commissioner DeSalvio?
I still maintain it's a motion for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote.
Please, now, yes, vote, Commissioner Schlotman.
Noted. And that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 11, VAR 73692, applicant owner Yvette Maria Figurito Campos, for possible action on a request for variance to allow 12-foot rear yard setback where 15 feet is required for an existing single-family dwelling addition at 100 Winsong Street, Ward One. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is before you as a result of a code enforcement action. Code enforcement had found that existing patio cover had been enclosed and converted into two additional bedrooms and a storage space without a building permit, and does not meet Title 19 setback requirements. Staff finds the hardship to be self-imposed by the owner, and therefore, staff recommend denial of their request. Thank you.
Thank you. This was, is the applicant here tonight? If they could please come forward to the podium. I'll need your name and address for the record, and then anything you want to add about your application.
My name is Yvette Maria Figurito Campos, and my address, 100 Winsong Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89145. But I don't, I don't know explain, I don't speak English very well. I'm waiting for my, Larry, my, I don't know.
So, you have someone coming here to help you talk tonight on your application?
I just have the, the form with my bad neighbor. He signed the paper, and he's, I said, the, the, sorry, the room. I don't know how to explain.
Okay. Did you mention someone else is coming here tonight?
Yes.
To help you, and they're not here yet?
No. But he's coming.
Yeah, I think, I think it might be better if we trail your item, so I'll call you back up as soon as they're here. So, I'll look for you when someone comes in.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'll read the item back, and you'll come back up with them to talk about the application.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item number 12, VAR 74338, applicant owner TP 1000 LLC, for possible action request for a variance to allow a proposed 40-foot lot width where 100 feet is required in the U zoning district at the southwest corner of Elkhorn and Yula Street, Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed variance would allow for the creation of a substandard lot to facilitate a future application of a general plan amendment and rezoning for a portion of the subject lot in preparation for the proposal of a commercial center development at the southeast corner of Elkhorn and Hualapai. Staff finds this hardship to be self-imposed by the owner, and therefore, is recommending denial of the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Chairman Commissioners, David Turner with Baughman &amp; Turner Civil Engineering and Land Surveying, representing the applicant on this item. Essentially, what we're asking to do is adjust the lot line between these two parcels at the southeast corner of Hualapai and Elkhorn. We're shifting that line over 40 feet for future development. The way we need to do it is by parcel map. And by doing that by parcel map, that creates a 40-foot wide lot. We understand that we'll never be able to develop that 40-foot wide lot. And once we come forward with future development, we'll do the proper mapping techniques to get rid of that underlying lot line and move forward from there. One of the reasons we're adjusting that line over is because we're taking so much dedication off of Hualapai on the Westerly parcel. It makes these two parcels a little more closer to the same acreage.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public would like to be heard in this? Please come up to the podium. If I could just have you step aside, I have a few people coming up. If everyone can come up, I'll give everyone a minute. I'll need your name, your address, if you're for or against, and the reasons why, please.
Good evening, Councilman. I am Bridgette Salvi, resident of 7030 North Conquistador Street. I oppose this application on the sole purpose that I find no hardship in having the properties remain where the boundary is, where it is right now. And by doing so, by taking one and giving to another, he's setting up the remaining parcel, which is titled on this application, the subject parcel, to incur a whole host of hardships when it comes to developing it as a residential piece. There'll be setbacks, there'll be variances, there'll be driveways, there'll be footprints of houses on the remaining portion that he's going to strip off this 40 feet. Other developers have seen no problem with the Hualapai hardship of giving out right-of-way. The intent of this applicant to try to spot zone, borrow this 40 feet from the property next door that they also own, to spot zone, in essence, the corner of Hualapai in Elkhorn, the southeast corner, is unacceptable. I deeply ask that you deny this because the intent is commercial.
Thank you.
Okay.
Kind of the next, you guys, there's three microphones. We can come up, and we can, we can get through your comments, please. Need your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Michelle Dishon, 9690 Whittig Avenue. I'm here to ask that you oppose this variance. We want to see this property, I know this isn't a rezoning, but clearly, that's the intent of this, is to next come back with commercial. Let's save everyone, you know, the trouble, and let's work with the neighbors and get in their, what would be homes. Next door is D.R. Horton, Richmond American. Everyone's succumbed to this zoning of RE. They've worked with the neighbors to rezon this for homes at a higher density, but to come in here and ask for this 40-foot lot when 100 is required just seems like it's not something that we need in this area. So, please oppose. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Michelle. Can I get your name and address, please, for the record?
Hi, my name is Kathleen Bruce. I live at 9880 Elkhorn Road, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89149. My parcel is kitty-cornered to this. I live on a two-acre parcel. I believe you might have been out earlier, maybe a couple years ago, when we debated this same parcel. And now, to just put this, get this 40-foot lot, and all the reason that they wanted is the intent for the commercial later on, and we're against it.
Thank you, Kathleen. Thanks for being brief. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Dave Peckman, 9695 Solar Avenue, 89149. Basically, everything that they said, and I ask that you oppose.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you for being brief. Name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, Sandra, Sandra Ellison, 9888 Whittig Avenue. My property is closest to where this is going to be built, and I oppose for the exact same reasons as everybody else.
Thank you.
Keeping the neighborhood consistent.
Thank you for coming up. Can I get your name and address, please, for the record, sir?
Michael Arnett, 9875 Whittig Avenue. And my property is right next to that property also, and I oppose it.
Could you speak closer to the microphone for us? Thank you.
I oppose it also, because we wanted a quiet, peaceful neighborhood, and that would totally change it for all of us.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael, for your comments. Can I get your name and address, please, for the record?
Carrie Peckman, 9695 Solar Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89149. And I oppose for the same reasons everyone else has mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Can I get your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Lynn Fundstein. I'm at 7256 North Jensen Drive.
Could you spell your last name? I'm sorry, I missed it.
It's P.F.U.N.D.S.T.E.I.N.
Thank you.
Okay, and I would just like to say, I highly oppose this, you know, on a selfish basis, moved into the neighborhood because of the rural aspect and just a little bit too much commercial building going on over there that's kind of starting to change the atmosphere of the neighborhood a little bit. So, highly oppose. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Taylor, I need your name.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Nathan Taylor, 8414 West Farm Road. This is actually my neighborhood. I would suggest to the commission that they hold this item and ask the applicant to have a neighborhood meeting to discuss their future plans for this area. There are several parcels in our neighborhood that are being proposed to be developed, and the neighbors are very, very concerned about what may come into the area and what may encroach on residential. So, I think what would be smart tonight with the neighbors that aren't able to be here tonight, and the fact that there are some concerns, that we have a neighborhood meeting by the client or the applicant, so that we can try to mitigate some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Taylor. Anyone else that would like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing, turn it back over to the applicant for a couple minutes for rebuttal.
Good evening. I understand their concerns. All we're asking for tonight is a mapping technique only. We're not asking for any development plans. Once those development plans come forward, they'll have to come before this commission as well as the city council, and we ask that you approve this item.
Thank you. I will turn it over to the Commission for Discussion. Commissioner DeSalvio?
Thank you.
Commissioner Ruff, sorry.
Sorry, you guys are quick tonight.
I didn't see your light on. I apologize.
Well, I turned it on as quick as I could, but you'd already turned the other way. It's okay. I just have a quick question of the applicant, and is it okay if I ask a question of the neighborhood? Because I'm wondering how it is that you know that the property would be developed for commercial, or has the applicant told you that? Everyone's coming up saying it's going to be commercial. I'm just wondering where they're getting that information from.
I believe it was in the presentation that the applicant made.
Did the applicant say it was going to be zoned commercial? I didn't hear that part.
It actually wasn't in my presentation.
Oh, I apologize.
It wasn't in our justification letter either. I think there were some meetings that happened some time ago that maybe staff brought that up in their write-up, but in my justification letter, I just said redevelopment of the site. I never mentioned anything about commercial.
I apologize. I thought I-
No, that's fine. I appreciate it.
Okay, and so, have you met with anyone in the neighborhood, or you have not met with the neighborhood?
I believe the owners have met with people in the neighborhood in the past, yes.
In the past?
I have not, no.
Meaning more than a year ago, or more than two years ago?
You know what? I can't answer that. I'm sorry.
All right. I mean, I'm inclined to go along with the recommendation that it be a neighborhood meeting. Mr. Chairman would have to acknowledge you if you wanted to say something. I apologize. But I'll finish my comments, and my other question to the applicant is, why would you not just do a reversionary map on this? I mean, it does seem rather unorthodox, and it does raise questions in my mind that maybe there are shenanigans if you're trying to do something where you've got a 40 lot, 40-foot wide lot in the middle. It's just very unorthodox, and I wonder what the justification for that truly is.
Right. And actually, we met with staff early on, I know the client met with staff early on, and this was a mapping technique that they suggested we go about, and that's the reason why they-
Staff suggested this to you?
That's correct, yes.
I find that very interesting.
It wasn't to me, but it was to my client, yes.
All right. Thank you.
So, through you, Mr. Chairman, the two sites are designated different land use designations, and therefore, the mapping technique has to be accomplished first so that you don't get split designated parcels. And as such, these are not under any current mapping action, so they wouldn't be nothing to revert to. They are currently raw acreage. So, the splitting of those would then be to, through the parcel map process, in which then they could come in with subsequent applications, in which they would have contiguous parcels in which they have consistent land use designations for their future development project.
So, what are these two parcels currently zoned?
Let's see, real quick. So, there are U undeveloped, but their general plan designations are all rural density residential and RMP, rural neighborhood preservation.
Okay, but they're both currently zoned RU undeveloped. So, my understanding is that you could, if you wanted to create a reversionary map, make it all one parcel, then come back in for the zoning that you would want, regardless of the fact that the master plan may call for two different zonings. They're still under the, they're both still under the same zoning. I mean, I'm hearing this all for the first time tonight, and I just find it incredible, but I'm just trying to understand, because to me, it's illogical.
Well, in all due respect, actually, the R and P allows itself for the U designation. I believe the R designation does not, and therefore, you'd still have a split designation issue.
Well, I would rather see them go for a reversionary map and then come forward for the actual zoning that they truly desire, rather than playing a lot of games with staff in terms of what they may want to accomplish, or sending the wrong message to the neighborhood about what they're truly trying to accomplish. So, I will not be in support of this application tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Roush. Commissioner DeSalvio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, from what I understand, is this, this, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know, you know the history, but I think this came up once before under one Mayor Pro Tem Ross. And I think, is that where we're getting the vision that it could possibly turn into a commercial piece of property? Is that where the push was back then? If I can ask one of the spokespeople for the, public comment?
Sure. I need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Bridgette Salvi, again, 7030 North Conquistador Street. Commissioner DeSalvio, yes, it was heard in 2015, fall, October, November, December, as a commercial proposal, it was denied, both through Commissioner here, planning, and at council. The interest by the neighbors to fight so hard against the proposal of smoke and mirrors looking for a GPA and a rezoning for commercial is written in staff analysis on this report, on this application, and that's where the flags went up. So, staff caught it somewhere in the discussion with the applicant when it was first initiated, probably at a desk, probably in an office, and this is where staff wrote it themselves, that the applicant intends to come back for a GPA and a rezoning for the, for the single purpose, the intent of a commercial development on the southeast corner.
Thank you.
Okay, but what we're hearing tonight is, if I understand this correctly, is the adjustment of the lot line. So, if the applicant did want to come back for commercial, again, correct me if I'm wrong, then they would have to resubmit another application for the designation of what that parcel would wind up being, once these lot lines are adjusted, if approved. Is that correct?
Staff's accurate.
That is correct. There would be subsequent applications. In this particular case, they would have to do a general plan amendment, and then a rezoning of the property, and then the ultimate design of the property would have a site development review. With any associated other applications, may it be use permits for particular uses, or if they're failing to meet development standards of any kind, potentially, it would be a variance application in addition to those site development review.
Okay. I honestly don't have a problem with, given the line adjustment, knowing that this application or applicant has to come back before us to tell us and show us exactly what's going to go on that property. And at that time, I think then, you got a dog in that fight. Right now, we're just trying to adjust the lot line on that property, and with that, I have no problem with making a motion for approval to adjust the lot line. But again, the applicant will have to come back before us if they want any, whatever kind of type of building they plan on putting on that property.
That's correct.
So, that would be my motion, a motion to approve that item, VAR 74338.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote.
And Chairman, uh, please, yes, vote for Commissioner Schlotman.
Thank you. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item, yeah, I apologize. Let's hold on one second, Chairman.
We've got a...
That's okay. Okay.
Are we okay?
Okay. Number 11. Okay. Okay, we are going to bring back up item number 11, VAR 73692. Applicant owner, Avett Maria Figueroa Campos, for possible action or request for variance to allow a 12-foot rear yard setback where 15 feet is required for an existing single-family dwelling addition at 100 Winsong Street, Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report again, please?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. This item is before we ask for code enforcement and action. Staff finds the hardship to be self-imposed by the owner, and therefore, staffs recommending denial of their request.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry for being late here. Larry Sanchez, 7844 Soenbrook Street, representing the homeowner. We are here to see if we can get some forgiveness. The homeowner had a patio cover, and they converted it into a room addition, not knowing about the rear setback distance of 15 feet. Currently, it's 12 and 1/2 feet, 12 feet, from the rear property line. We're asking if we can encroach into the 15-foot rear setback three feet.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner DeSalvio?
Just a couple of questions. So the people that owned the house are the ones that did this? It wasn't they bought the house with it on it, or...?
The patio cover was already there when they bought the house, and unfortunately, they started constructing without a permit. And what happened was, I believe during the middle of construction, the code enforcement officers came by and pretty much gave them a ticket. At that point, they hired myself to help them possibly legalize it. So I met with staff, and staff recommended if I bring a letter to tonight's meeting of the rear neighbor, which I have here in my hand, that depending on the commission...
So when code enforcement came out, they red-tagged it? Was construction stopped at that point?
Yes.
And then, did you complete it? Or is it still in the unfinished position?
No, I'm not a contractor. I'm just a designer, professional designer. I'm an engineer. What I did is I walked the property, and I said, "Yeah, we need to take this to the city to have it legalized, but first, we need to go to a public hearing to see if we can get a variance on the setback distance before we apply for a building permit," which is hopefully our next step.
And I noticed you've got the one for behind... How about either side? Any neighbor complaints?
From my understanding, there haven't been any complaints from the side, but the one affected the most is the one approaching the rear towards the back. And that's the signature that we got tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to quickly... Okay, it is a letter of support for... Commissioner Roush, did you... I see your light on.
I just have a question for Mary McElhone and Code Enforcement. How many cars are allowed to be parked at this property? I'm counting four in the front yard and two in the backyard. Is that allowed? Do we care? I mean, it just looks like a used car lot or a junkyard. I can't decide what. I mean, I drove by this property too, and I was concerned that... I don't know if they're operating a car repair facility here, or what's going on, but there's definitely two cars in the backyard, and one at the corner, and three in the driveway, and there's just a lot going on here, and it just doesn't look good to me.
Well, I can assure you, Commissioner, that this is not an auto repair shop of any kind. They're not running any business of any sort. Might be a lot of family there, or possibly neighbors that are parking across the street on that as well.
And two broken-down cars in the backyard.
Commissioner Roush, is that from your visit?
From my visit, and I'm looking at Google Earth as well right now.
Okay, because I didn't see it in the pictures in our backup. That's why I was... Okay, thank you.
I looked it up on Google Earth, because I saw it in my visit, and I just wanted to double-check.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, for point of clarification from staff. Vehicle parking, storage, or repair in a residential zoning districts in the front yard, they need to be on either an approved driveway, on a surface paved, other than pavers or other blocks of uniform appearance that are at least two inches in thickness, on concrete or asphalt paving that extends the full length and width of the vehicle, on a surface of decomposed granite and less than two inches thick. So there... I don't see necessarily a limitation on operable vehicles, and there's also requirements about inoperable vehicles. There is a requirement pertaining to numbers that says... And it's not specific to front or reared, but it just says, "On a single-family residential lot, no more than three operable vehicles may be stored, or one vehicle per 1,250 square feet of lot area, whichever allows the greatest number of vehicles." So if you want us to start doing calculations, we can see, but I don't know what the picture from our aerials from...
Chairman, I think we're a little far beyond what we're supposed to be discussing with the intended item.
Okay.
So the reason for my question is just that, you know, they're asking for a variance, they're asking to go above and beyond, and I usually grant those if it's a good citizen and a good neighbor, and yes, they've got the rear neighbor's approval, but when I drive by it, it looks like an unlandscaped house with an unlandscaped backyard with seven cars that I counted when I drove by.
Okay, there are certain conditions that require sort of variance.
And I don't really like the way that a whole operation looks, and so that's why I'm probably not going to be inclined to vote for this, because why would I grant a variance under these circumstances when it looks to me like you're a bad neighbor? So that's my justification.
Commissioner, there's a certain requirements in our code that... Characteristics that describe what a variance is to be given, and those aren't part of the requirements?
I understand that. My vote is still the same.
Commissioner Tucson, I see your light on.
Yep, I just want to clarify this. Tonight, all we're doing is voting on the setback, whether to approve or not. Is that correct?
It's for the variance to allow a 12-foot, as opposed to 15 that's required.
Correct. Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Williams, did you have anything?
No. Mr. Chairman, if I may. We're talking three feet, and the most affected person sent the letter in support. I don't care about how many cars you park there, I really can't care less. But I can tell you this. I was on the fence with this one, but because you have the support of the person who's most affected, I would make a motion for approval on VAR 73692, item number 11.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask for, and if approved, condition that number two, specify a time in which the applicant is to obtain building permits. I think 60 days would be ample time. I think they already have... Do you have construction drawings already?
Yes, I have construction drawings.
Would 30 days be...
That's fine, yeah.
So that would amend condition number two. To read, all necessary building permits shall be obtained, and final inspections shall be completed in compliance with Title 19 in all codes as required by the Department of Building and Safety within 60 days.
Thank you. And I did hear Commissioner Schlotman. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a question for... I'm sorry, I'm answering a little bit about basically, we're building safety parks, you know, four weeks on review. They hadn't started plans, I don't think that they'll be able to take their plans permanent, and a lot of them question, leave it within 60 days. What happens if they're not finished within 60 days?
Well, the applicant has indicated they already have construction drawings ready to go, so there would be a two-week turnaround, potentially for Building and Safety, or four, and then another month for inspections. I guess you can always add at the tail end of that, unless extended by the building official.
I like that, well, it's extended by the building official, too, since I know that the building official has told me that it's late 60 days out, and if they make one comment, that they're going to back end or additionally, so that would be my condition to...
Thank you, Commissioner Schlotman. Does the applicant agree with the added condition?
Yeah, I'll submit a memo as soon as I can. Hopefully, after this meeting, I could start, hopefully tomorrow, or do I need to receive a letter first before I can...
It's 10 days.
Within 10 days.
It's after 10 days, isn't it?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, he can submit for the permit tomorrow if he likes. However, planning will not be able to sign off on the permit for 10 days following today's meeting until the appeals period has resolved itself.
And that letter will go to the homeowner, I would assume?
Yes, the letter, final action letter, will go to the homeowner.
So I'll get the ball rolling, and then just wait until I get the letter to...
Okay, so you agree to the condition... Correct, you agree to the condition?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSalvio?
Okay, so then I would move for approval with the conditions for VAR 73692, item number 11.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote.
As amended, right?
As amended, correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you could just hold for Commissioner Slott.
Noted, thank you. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to 13, excuse me, SUP 74225. Applicant owner, Nucleus Investments, Inc., for possible action on request for a special use permit for proposed 4,442 square foot beer wine cooler off-still establishment use with a waiver to allow a 260-foot distance separation from a church, house of worship where 400 feet is required, at 1,600 North Martin Luther King Boulevard, Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds proposed use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding existing land uses with minimal impact as a similar uses in existence on the southeast corner of Owens and Martin Luther King Boulevard. Staff is recommending approval of the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
John Burke Architect, 6037 South Florida Apache. I'm here tonight with the owner, John...
John Edmund.
John Edmund. And we're at the northeast corner of Martin Luther King and Owens. If I could get the picture... There we go. So we're here requesting... This facility's been, you know, closed for 10 years. We want... Terrible Herbs wants to, you know, take it, refurbish it, get it going again. The waiver is for the separation from property line to property line of 260 feet where 400 is required from this church. The waiver is allowed because the church is on the other side of 100-foot right-of-way. Staff is recommending approval, and we respectfully ask for your recommendation for approval, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I will close it and turn it over to the commission. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chairman Cherry. I'm excited about this project. I live actually across, diagonally across the street in a subdivision, and we've seen this property boarded up for 10 to 14 years. And I'm excited because the building would bring new energy and a needed service to our community. And again, the building was approved for wine and beer in 1994. So I think it'll be a good partner, it's a suitable site, and I move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes.
Chairman, if you could just hold for Commissioner Slott.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Chairman Cherry?
Yes.
I might add that because I do live in the area, this will not affect me.
Thank you for the discretion.
Any greater or lesser than anyone else, so I've...
Thank you for the discretion. Thank you.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, that item will go forward and be heard as a part of the December 5th city council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 14, SUP 74259. Applicant CFME LLC. Owner, Paul C. Gallo Trust et al., for possible action or request for a special use permit for an existing 6,897 square foot health club use at 2411 Tech Center Court, Suite 101, Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject's site is a planned business park with covenant conditions and restrictions that dictate the type of uses permitted within. Uses include manufacturing, assembly, repair, and services of electronics and fiber optic equipment, telecommunications, data processing equipment, medical, pharmaceutical, aeronautical equipment, administrative and professional offices, as well as incidental accessory uses that support the principally permitted uses, such as professional services, retail uses in support of primary permitted uses, open space and recreational uses. The type and intensity of a health club facility meets the intent of the planned business park by providing a recreational use that provides both users of the business park and area residents professional service as defined by the CCNRs for the Las Vegas Tech Technology Center. Staff therefore recommends approval of the request with several conditions placed upon the special use permit to ensure compatibility with the surrounding land uses. Deputy Planning Director Mary McElhone has additional information pertaining to this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary McElhone, Deputy Planning Director. So from April through June, we had several complaints of noise, and we conducted several inspections out there. With the new conditions that were placed on the license, the location and licensing appears to be compliant. The last complaint we received was July 11th, and since that time, there have been no complaints. We last conducted an inspection on August 30th of 2018, and the business was found to be in compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioner. Matthew Neeland, the law firm of Sylvester in Plednik, 1731 Village Center Circle.
What was your last name, Matthew? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Neeland, K-N-E-L-A-N-D.
Neeland, Neeland.
With me tonight is the business owner and operator, Zach Forrest.
Good evening. Name's Zach Forrest, 1173 Silverstone Way, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89123.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything for your...
We're just happy to see that staff is recommending approval. We did come before the city council before on those noise complaint items. We've taken measures to address, and as staff has pointed out, it's been several months since the last complaint, and so fingers are crossed that this business is allowed to continue to operate and hopefully achieve some measure of success, both with the city and also in business-wise.
Thank you. All right. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard. I'd see some people, so if I could ask you guys to step aside, you can sit in the front row there. We do have three microphones, and we are going to limit the time. If there is a group of people and there is a representative, I'll allow some more time. Who would like to go first? There we go. Name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening. Lee Dryson, 2460 Professional Court, Suite 110. I am the owner and operator of a law firm employing nine persons, including myself. There's actually a slight mistake on the report of staff on page 7, which indicates that the property to the west of this location is vacant. It is not. It is a building in which I operate and have been there for at least a decade. I can assure staff and the commission that this is not a harmonious use. I am no longer able at times to conduct business in my own office. The banging is so loud, I will not even have clients come and meet in my office anymore because it's so embarrassing, and we never know when that time is going to occur. What's interesting is, I would respectfully disagree that there have been no issues since they've imposed these restrictions in the last three months. In fact, there is still rarely a day that I don't hear the banging going on and the disturbance. My employees, I believe, probably all of them, have submitted opposition cards to share with the commission and with staff that this is happening on a regular basis. I'm not against noise, and I'm not against small business. I am a small businessman, but what I am against is when somebody else's use of their property unreasonably interferes with our use. This is an identical situation that just happened in Hermosa Beach. The city council in Hermosa Beach dealt with an issue that was virtually identical of a CrossFit gym that was creating such a problem, and their attorneys raised the exact same issues that you're going to hear here this evening. Number one, they said that there were no code enforcement violations. Number two, they said they were in light industry zoning. I will tell you that the city council came back and found that this was a public nuisance. And in fact, the mayor of Hermosa Beach came back and said, "You know what? We never should have approved this type of use in light industrial." It was clearly a public nuisance, and it is not harmonious. And the fact is, is that we would continue to file complaints every single day with code enforcement if we could, but with all due respect, the response we got was, "You know what? They just don't have the time and the ability to keep coming out here." And part of our frustration is, is we never know when the noise is going to hit. So there are so many times that we have made complaints, that by the time code enforcement is trying to get out there, they've already stopped the banging. And so on that basis, I strongly oppose this use. We have attempted to resolve these issues with this applicant, I will tell you, even before this escalated. In other words, all the changes, all the qualifications that staff has requested, I met with this gentleman and asked him to do these things, close the doors, use mats. You're in a warehouse where there are... It is just natural that it's going to reverberate this noise, and the response was, "We're not going to do any of that." Now, they finally had to take some reasonable measures, and that was for the last 90 days. And I will tell you, unfortunately, it's not making a huge difference. It's made some, but it's not making a huge difference. And the fact that I can no longer use my offices, the fact that my staff on a regular basis is being interfered with, their use, it is just absolutely ridiculous that we face this situation. And so I would strongly object to this and ask the commission to reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Cheryl Hughesby, 2460 Professional Court, Suite 110. I also oppose this application. First of all, I have an email here that I would like to submit from Officer McCoy with Code Enforcement on August 7th, saying that they no longer want me to email them or notify them of any noise or vibration that's coming from the CrossFit gym. I started in April 23rd keeping a disturbance log of every time we could hear them that I would also like to submit. My office is about 80 foot away from the back doors of their establishment. Even when the doors are down, it makes no difference. There's vibrations coming from them throwing the weights. I am assuming it's because they're heavier sometimes. My window by my door on my office rattles. I'm used to working in a silent office with my door closed all day. It interferes with my work. It distracts me. It shouldn't be there. I also have an email that Vicky Ozuna from Code Enforcement sent on June 22nd, saying that this final sentence is, if he fails to do what is required, he will be held accountable. Since then, I made 114 entries. Since that email was sent, I've made 114 entries on my log.
Thank you. Would you like to turn those in to the clerk for the record?
Yes, please. I would also like to say that I've witnessed them pulling weight sleds down Smoke Ranch. This is a business area that's not a professional presentation. When they do drop weights, it's not just one drop. Even if there's only one person they're dropping, it bounces. So it's about three impacts every time they drop the weights. It's very distracting.
Thank you, Cheryl. I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up on your comments. Is there anything in particular you'd like to add?
Yeah, one more point I'd like to make is, actually, two more points. I noticed on the backup for this meeting that you're not supposed to be able to hear it past their property line. If you're at their property line or you're in our parking lot, when they're dropping weights, you can hear the clanging. What disturbs me within my office is the vibrations, but you can absolutely hear them dropping weights past the property line. Officer Byrne was in my office, I believe, in July to witness the sounds from Code Enforcement. She told me that in her office, if it's noisy, she has to wear noise-canceling headphones. That doesn't cancel the vibrations, and I shouldn't have to wear them to be able to do my job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Donna Kupiak, 8461 Prairie Run. Actually, I should give you my office. 2460 Professional Court, Suite 110, Las Vegas, 89128. I work at Lee Dryson Chartered, and I have an inner office, and I feel the vibrations. I call them rumbling, similar to a jackhammer. It's a disruption. It's a nuisance. When it does happen, my employees, I hear them in the inner part of our office, comment, here it goes again. It is a nuisance. It's a disturbance, and I hope that this is, you understand the conditions that we have to live with every day.
Thank you for your comments and being brief. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Kevin Clarity, 2460 Professional Court. Chairperson Cherry, Director Summerfield. I come to you as an individual whose office located at 2460 Professional Court is a mere 40 feet away from the CrossFit gym, and I can attest to the fact that this is not a harmonious use and is not indicative of a business park environment. I'll be the first person to tell you, I have a great deal of respect for an individual that can lift hundreds of pounds of weights over their head. CrossFit is a sport that's taken the country by storm, and the reason is, is that it's high intensity. These individuals are prompted and encouraged to throw weights and do their training in high intervals. The sound permeates through the concrete, right through the parking lot. As my other tenants have testified, I can hear the vibrations in my windows. I can see water on my desk shake when they're dropping the weights. It's inconsistent. We don't know when it's going to happen. It has prompted me to take my business into the field. The meetings that I want to conduct at my office, I can no longer conduct out of fear and anxiety that my clients will wonder, what is that noise? The CrossFit gym is not a harmonious use with the business park, and I strongly encourage and ask you to oppose this special use permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kevin, can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Mila. I reside in 1617 Indian Cove Lane.
I'm sorry, I missed your last name. What was it again?
Cheung, C-H-E-U-N-G.
Thank you.
1617 Indian Cove Lane, Las Vegas, 89128. I work Monday to Friday right west of their cross gym. I think we're the closest office building. And Monday to Friday, it depends on what days, there's always this thud, that sounds coming from their office whenever they drop the weights. It's really bothering the performance of my work, and it's a nuisance, and I strongly oppose this approval.
Thank you for your comments. Name and address, please, for the record.
Doug Rankin, 1055 Whitney Ranch Road, Suite 210, Henderson, Nevada, on behalf of the property owner at 2460 Professional Court, which is located approximately 41 feet from the proposed use. Its use in an area is to be considered on its own merits. Title 19 directs us that the process recognizes that within a given zoning district, certain uses may be appropriate and compatible in some locations, but not others. The burden of proof is on the applicant to demonstrate that they are not going to have secondary impacts that do not allow my client's tenants to enjoy their property and utilize it. As evidenced here today, they've had many, many times of doing that. One of the things the staff report failed to discuss was that on June 20th, the applicant appealed a notice and order for violations of the noise ordinance, for creating a nuisance at the location, and City Council upheld that and found them in violation of a noise ordinance. They had a lot of discussion about doing mitigating things and mitigating their secondary impacts. They've done some of those things, as demonstrated, but there's still impacts to the property owner to the west, and I'd like to submit that record of the notice and order for the My client is not adverse to trying to work with the applicant. As a matter of fact, they tried to work with the applicant, and they were met, they were buffed. As a matter of fact, when they met with them afterwards, they turned the music up, started slamming weights louder, and more problems occurred. After the 20th, it continued. The next day, there was a complaint lodged with Code Enforcement on the 21st of June, indicating that they were violating that. But in accordance with that, my client, if you're so inclined, we would recommend that you deny this use. It's not compatible. It's not harmonious. The testimony here, they can enjoy their property, and they haven't done anything to mitigate their impacts substantial. But if you are inclined, we would recommend amending two conditions and adding two additional ones, and I have copies of those for the commission for your consideration, but let me read them into the record briefly. Exterior activities are prohibited. The reason we ask for that is outdoor activity is not a permitted use within the CPB zoning. That would be part of commercial outdoor recreation to allow them to utilize that area. It's not a permitted use in CPB zoning. You can't do it. It's not permitted. However, if you were inclined to agree with staff that running and jogging is okay, we'd like to indicate that no shouting, yelling, screaming, that results in a sound above 60 decibels at the property line of the subject site. The reason that is, is CrossFit wants intensity. So people run around the outside of the gym, and as they run, it's much like boot camp, they yell and scream. They also carry cowbells. At one time, they were pushing sleds through the fire lane. They've since moved those sleds to pushing them in the public right-of-way on public sidewalk to avoid that problem of utilizing the fire lane, which I know the fire department, the chiefs here, wouldn't allow you to have a sled in the fire lane for safety. The second item is noise generated from the, I mean, number six, noise generated from the exercise, fitness, instruction activities, or any music shall not be audible. We've added any music because part of the CrossFit activity is to have loud music as part of the training. Finally, two additional ones regarding vibration. The City of Las Vegas code doesn't address vibration, however, Clark County zoning code does, and we would request, as this is a special use permit, that no detectable vibration be on the property line of the subject site as an additional condition. And I have Clark County's code to submit, showing that this is a reasonable item that has been imposed in other jurisdictions. However, this is a special use permit, so you can impose additional conditions to mitigate this. And finally, a required review as a public hearing shall be, for every six months until removed by the City Council to ensure that this applicant complies with conditions of approval, which they have demonstrated they have not throughout this time. At the time when they opened without a business license, where a complaint was filed for them operating, and probably would have been operating today if they weren't disturbing their neighbors, but a complaint was filed because they were operating without a business license. So we would ask you to deny this item. If not, please consider the conditions of approval that we've placed into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Anyone else from the public like to be heard? Seeing no one, I'll ask the applicant to come back up, and I'll give you a few minutes for rebuttal.
Once again, Chairman Matthew Neeland, Law Firm of Sylvester and Plednik. I just want to address the public comments. These are very similar to what we heard at the City Council hearing back when there was still a noise complaint. And I think that maybe things have gotten off to a bad start. CrossFit Max Effort, Zach Forrest, they're not bad neighbors. CrossFit inherently is a noisy weightlifting exercise regimen, okay? So people aren't going outside and just screaming for the sake of screaming. If you're hearing people talk, it's to direct athletes or to give instruction as to where to go or what the next workout coming is. And then as far as the vibration, Zach is, he can tell you about the mitigating efforts that he's tried over the past few months. But to be clear, CrossFit Max Effort is working with city staff to address whatever noise complaints are coming in. So whatever staff is telling the public, neighbors, about the noise complaints and whether to lodge them, whether or not to lodge them, this business owner will have to cease operation with those conditions that were just suggested. If they can't drop weights, if they can't do CrossFit exercise, it can't be a CrossFit gym. And so just taking into consideration the small business, Zach's here, he's working with city, he's attempting to mitigate whatever it is, is the complaint, and as you can see, there are resources on the other side, and he feels like he's fighting an uphill battle. Perhaps in another neighborhood, it wouldn't have happened, but to be sure, he's working with city and attempting to mitigate, and the result of a denial of special use permit will be that, as a property manager can attest, this 10-year lease will have to be canceled.
Would you like to add anything more, Zach?
Commissioners, I recognize all of the concerns from our neighbors, and I did as best I could without actually changing our operations for our members to hinder their training. We put up blocks against the garage doors, so those pictures that you saw of us running outside, that no longer occurs. We run out the front doors on the other side, which is actually something that we're looking at fixing because it's a potential safety hazard. We have to open up double doors. That's the reason why CrossFit gyms seek industrial spaces or those roll-up doors, so we can run in and out without potentially running into each other. So those doors have been closed since these complaints have come about. We put up matting against the walls. We put up jump boxes, a bunch of equipment to deaden the sound. The code enforcers came out. They stood outside of our doors, no more than five feet. They went into the building, our neighbor's building, and they said that, yeah, it's less noisy than someone closing their car door outside the office building. So I'm not sure exactly what the decibel rating is or how loud that actually is, but it's hardly a nuisance, in my opinion.
We will turn this over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Roush, I see you later. Is it okay for you? Commissioner Schlotman, go ahead, please.
Yes, I just want to make a couple of comments. A lot of these CrossFit gyms and other gyms are in San Juan Road or in downtown. They are located in a building that's located around the store, so it's a tiny shop, it's industrial use, and in the middle of the park, it's not that big of an issue. When you're inside the building, surrounded by professional uses along the line of the park, I think it could become more of a nuisance. It's not directly related. But the past few months, I had a shoot with a couple of homeless people in the lot, directed along the house, and they were going, they were getting on their own bikes, and they're chopping stuff up. I mean, just one piece of floor, or one bicycle, and they threw it on the ground, and it was even a tiny foundation. Somebody thought, be away, would wake me up for a full time tonight, and it was just going on for just a few nights. Oh, and I get frozen, goes down there, got me coming up, and so I didn't understand how big the reasons must be if you're trying to conduct business and why, and you're just dropping weight here and there. So, I mean, for those reasons, I'm kind of, I could support this a lot.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Schlotman, Commissioner Roush?
Thank you. Similar to what Commissioner Schlotman has said, my concerns are many-fold. One is that the residents are telling us that they have seek, tried to seek some sort of reconciliation with you and that you've retaliated. If that's true, that's concerning to me. I don't need you to rebut, I just, that's what was said. Secondly, the tech center was developed as a crown jewel for the city. It was meant to be a multi-use business park. It's a planned business environment where you have a number of different uses that need to be able to coexist harmoniously, and it sounds like that's not what's happening here. It sounds like if this type of a use continues, you're going to lose some of the professional uses that are in the area, and then it's going to force the area more industrial in nature. And I know that was never the intent of the business park when it was created. It was meant to be a technology park, an office park, a medical park. Some of the uses, yes, indeed, are industrial. They were meant to be light industrial. They were meant to have small roll-up doors, 14 feet, 12 feet or less. They were not meant to be heavy industrial in use. A health club by normal definition isn't loud. It doesn't have the clanking sounds of huge 100-pound weights falling on the floor. I don't know why you don't invest in thicker mats or maybe some other solution, and maybe you have, but obviously, it's still enough that it's still causing a very big problem for the neighbors that is not harmonious and that is distressing to them. I mean, I think that I would have jangled nerves as well if I tried to work nearby under these circumstances. So my concern is that whether Code Enforcement said, quit calling us with your complaints or not, which I find that part a little bit hard to stomach, but if that's true, Mary's got some work to do to find out who said that. We obviously want to know that there's an issue that's disturbing a neighborhood. We obviously want to know if there's an issue that's impacting a planned business community because people are owners in that neighborhood as well. Those individual buildings were built with people that bought them with a loan, and they're locked in longer than a 10-year lease that you're in. So yes, you might have to break your 10-year lease, but a lot of these people have made a lifelong commitment there, and that's not fair to them either. So I guess what I keep going back to is the fact that you seem like you're trying to tell us, you're working with them, but it sure doesn't sound like you're working with them, or we wouldn't be here today. So when you opened in 2012 and got your approvals originally, I'm sure that the city was thinking, this is just a health club, a basic training gym, you know, like others that we see in neighborhoods. But that's not what this is at all. I'm very familiar with CrossFit, and just like Commissioner Schlotman said, it is a disruptive use. If it's in an M1 zone, that's a completely different animal next to auto shops and all other kinds of heavy industrial uses. But this is a planned business environment, and I just, I don't see it. It doesn't work for me here. Thanks.
Commissioner Tucson?
Yeah. My son is a personal trainer. He's been a personal trainer for 20 years. He owned his own gym for 23 years, and he was very cognizant of the people that were around him, and he had this problem too. So he had to stop doing CrossFit because of what was happening for the surrounding businesses. So I understand your plight. I really do. I understand where you're coming from. I also understand the people that are in this business, they're in this center, they're trying to conduct business, and they're hearing thud, 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 and, you know, that would give me an enormous headache. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support your petition today, or your, I'm not. I understand what you're going through. I think you have a great business. I just think you're in the wrong location, and I think you need to find a place that's more suitable for you to conduct business. Thank you.
Anyone that'd like to entertain a motion? If anyone would like to make, Commissioner Tucson?
I'll make a motion to deny.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, that would be a yes or no for Commissioner Schlotman.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlotman.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 15, SUP 74319, applicant John Clement, owner Durango S&amp;S LLC and Durango Joy LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed 2,400-square-foot beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment use at 8053 North Durango Drive, Suite 160, Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff finds the proposed beer/wine cooler off-sale use can be operated in a harmonious and compatible manner with the existing surrounding land uses and is recommending approval of the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get your name and address for record, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Tina Brown, 8414 West Farm Row, representing the applicant. We respectfully request that you follow staff recommendation for approval, and we are here to answer any questions.
Thank you. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Turn it over to the commission. Commissioner DeSalvio, I see you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move for approval, and the reason why is this, this is already, this establishment's been there for some time and has already operated as such. It's just under new ownership, so I would like to make a motion for approval on the agenda item number 15.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your votes. Please cast your votes.
Mr. Chairman, that would be a yes or a denial for Commissioner Schlotman?
Thank you, noted. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Item number 16, I will have to abstain from, Annabas Industries. I will turn it over to Commissioner Toussaint.
Hi. Item SUP 74295, special use permit, public hearing, applicant Newleaf CLV Dispensary, owner and Herb Properties, for possible action request for a special use permit for a proposed 3,272 square foot marijuana dispensary use at 16,000 Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite 150.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll give the staff report first.
Staff report, please. Thank you.
Thank you. The subject site was previously approved for the same use in 2014 and continues to comply with all minimum distance requirements as set forth in Title 1912, and therefore, the use can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the existing surrounding land uses and future land uses as projected by the general plan. As such, staff recommends approval of the request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The applicant?
Good evening, Jeff Donato of Argentum, 6077 South Fort Apache Road, Suite 120, Las Vegas. I don't know if it's a good evening or good morning for Commissioner Schlotman, but good morning, Commissioner Schlotman. Thank you for being with us this evening. As staff recommends approval, we are here seeking your approval for the SUP of the marijuana dispensary at 1600 Las Vegas Boulevard. We have read all staff's conditions and accept those conditions, and are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I'll close the public hearing now, and I'll open it up, actually, for public hearing. Does someone would like to talk on this issue, please? If not, I'll close public hearing. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
That's it. I'd like to introduce one of the owners with me this evening, Mr. Kenny Keikendall is here this evening.
Commissioners?
If there's no other comment, I'd just make a motion for approval. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh. Commissioner Schlotman, can we hear you?
Yes. So I just want to say that I, as well as on many, or, none of our recreational establishments in the past, dispensary, production, cultivation, so we, and I've always grown up in the past, and so then, in the judgment, we'll be able to talk about it as a matter of mind. But as the council has given me a, we live at Allard Arms, and the only person that I recognize is that I had a kid before, the last time that we, so I am together, it's built about six years ago, and it's all grown as a matter of mind. But as in 2014, the finding commission, the council, Regina, had a single location, and it was for nothing potential to do something, so, if there's no comment, I'll take a question. If anybody else has a comment.
That's fine.
I'm sorry.
Please do.
I'm sorry.
Wait a minute. Commissioner Roush has something to say.
Vice Chair, temporary pro temp Toussaint. Well, the chief, I'm not sure what to address you as. I just want to say for the record that I will be abstaining from this vote. I own property one block away that I do feel will be impacted, so I will not vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlotman?
Okay, if they have a time or a slot on the arm. On, on number 15, I, I should be 749, I would move, follow some conditions or verbal consent.
Please post. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Toussaint.
Thank you.
Item number 18, SUP 74208, applicant owner Heather Esquen, for possible action request for a special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental use at 1901 East St. Louis Avenue, Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application is before you as a result of a code enforcement, actually, hold on, sorry. Sorry, this was not before you from a code enforcement action, this is item number 18. The applicant is proposing to operate a non-owner occupied four-bedroom short-term residential rental unit that meets all the minimum special use permit requirements of Title 1912. Staff is recommending approval with condition number one requiring the expungement if the property is to be sold. I'm going to turn this over to Deputy Planning Director Mary McElhan for additional information. Thank you.
Mary McElhan, Deputy Planning Director. There has been no code enforcement action on this property, and no identified short-term rental renting has been going on, nor has it been identified in any websites as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for record, please?
Heather Esquin, 4655 Balford Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada 89121.
Thank you, Heather.
I'm here just to ask to follow staff recommendations and approval for this short-term rental. I won't be living in the property, but I do, the reason why I purchased this house is so that I can get my father closer to me. He's currently in Mexico, and, and the only way I can do that is to subsidize the income with, you know, having a part of the property rented out in the short-term site, or short-term rental sites.
Thank you, Heather. Excuse me. This was noticed as a public hearing, anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one from the public, I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you know, there's no other special permanent people in the area that do the vitamins, but then, or this, that, it would lose all approval on number 18, SUP 7428, subject to staff addition.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will move forward to the city council and be heard as a part of their meeting on December 5th, 2018.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 19, SUP 74215, applicant owner Feng Ying Li and Hai Feng Li, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental use at 3909 San Bernardino, San Bernardino Avenue, Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application is before you as a result of code enforcement action for an illegal short-term rental, rental use. The applicant is proposing to operate a non-owner occupied five-bedroom short-term residential rental unit that meets all the minimum special use permit requirements of Title 1912. Staff is recommending approval with condition number one requiring the expungement if the property is to be sold. Once again, I'm going to turn this over to Deputy Planning Director Mary McElhan for additional information.
Code enforcement was able to confirm short-term rental activity April through July of this past year. July 18, 2018, a notice and order was issued to the owners of this property. Since that time, no short-term rental activity has been identified. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for this for the record?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioner. My name is David Wong, and this is my father, Wen Wong. I will be speaking for him. We live on 3909 San Bernardino Avenue. And we operated this short-term rental before we realized there was a permit that was required. And as soon as we received the notice, we stopped all the operation and came here to apply for it. And we accept the staff's condition of approval, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one from the public, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Roush?
I would just say to the applicant that it's been well-known for more than a year that short-term rentals are not legal without a permit, so I'm sorry to tell you that your ignorance is, is not probably a good defense in this case, but I'm glad that you ceased operation at that point. Given that fact, and given the fact that I continue to support the ban on short-term rentals, and we voted that at the last meeting, I will not be in support of this tonight. I'd be willing to make a motion unless any of my commissioners have anything they'd like to share.
Please do.
So in regard to item number 18, SUP 7, I'm sorry, number 19, SUP 74215, my motion is for denial.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, that is a per Commissioner Schlotman?
Uh, I hit the wrong button. Thank you. Noted. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final this evening unless appealed to the city clerk within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 20, SUP 74274, applicant owner Ming Kang Liu, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental use at 5436 Doe Avenue, Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is proposing to operate a non-owner occupied four-bedroom short-term residential rental unit that meets all the minimum special use permit requirements of Title 1912. Staff is recommending approval with condition number one requiring the expungement if the property is to be sold. And once again, I'll turn this over to Deputy Planning Director Mary McElhan for additional information.
No code enforcement action has been identified, and no short-term rental activity either. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Lena Foner. I'm a friend of applicant Ming Kang Liu. I'll be, translate for him.
Okay.
The address is 5436 Doe Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada 89146, applying for short rental license.
Anything else you wanted to add?
No, he said no.
Okay, thank you. This was noticed as a public hearing, anyone from the public like to be heard in this? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner DeSalvio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Received a lot of opposition on this property, and I think it has to do also with it being such a close proximity to that elementary school. Just about across the street from it. Based on so much opposition, and I've only seen, I think even on this sheet here, only one, actually, no support. So it'd be 15 protests. I can't stand the support of a short-term rental with that much community outpouring of, against it. You just can't go against the residents like that, so I can't support that item.
Okay. Commissioner Roush, did you have anything?
I'm ready to vote.
You're ready to vote? Who would like to make a motion? Commissioner DeSalvio, you ready?
Make a motion for denial on item number 20, SUP 74274.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, please move a yes or a per Commissioner Schlotman?
Thank you. Noted. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 21, SUP 74277, applicant owner Francisco A. Garcia, for possible action request for a special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental use at 3340 Esquina Court, Ward 4. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application is before you as a result of a code enforcement action for an illegal short-term rental use. The applicant is proposing to operate a non-owner occupied five-bedroom short-term residential unit that meets all the minimum special use permit requirements of Title 1912. Staff is recommending approval with condition number one requiring the expungement if the property is to be sold. And I will turn this over to Deputy Planning Director Mary McElhan for additional information.
So a notice and order was issued by code enforcement on July 11, 2018. Unfortunately, the property owner continued to rent. Code enforcement was able to confirm that short-term activity continued on August 17, when they spoke to a visitor who was renting the property from Chicago, and they said that they were renting the property from August 16 through August 22. Thank you.
Thank you. This is, can I get your name and address to the record, please? Excuse me.
Good evening, Chairman. Commissioners Edgar Montalvo, 2209 Tosca Street, Building A, Apartment 101. We would like to accept all recommendations. We know that we have a code enforcement issue, but we will pay the fees and start all over. I know that this might not look for the record, but we're trying to do the best that we can for, in behalf of our client. Our client is already taking some classes, or he's, he's gonna take the community college of managing this type of properties. He knows that he's not doing that well as he seemed, as he should, and as a result, he has all these fees on the, on code enforcement. But now, he wants to start all over and doing the things right. He stopped activities on the, right after the last notification that he has, and we will be asking you for an approval and just following the recommendation for staff to start doing the, renting the house in the way that we should, or like he should.
Thank you. Excuse me. This was noticed as a public hearing, anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Toussaint?
You told me that, you said that the owner is taking classes, is that CS?
Yes. We usually, when we went to the building, to the City of Las Vegas pre-app, they handle some of brochures sometimes about the classes for the community college to handle the, these properties for vacation home rental homeowners. So he's signing in. I'm not sure if he already took it, or he's gonna be, his wife who's gonna take it, but someone on his family is gonna be taking those classes so they can do better work on renting this house.
Well, I noticed that we have 21 protests, I believe, on this, no, 14 protests on this. Have you talked to the neighbors? Have you had a neighborhood meeting? What has your client done?
Yeah, well, actually, when we review the, the, on the web page, we only know these three of them, two notices, and we tried to contact them directly. Unfortunately, we didn't, we couldn't actually talk to none of them. But if you want, we can defer the item, and we can have a meeting with them and explain what we're trying to do in order to try to be good neighbors with them.
My first inclination is to vote for denial on this, but you did say that your client is taking classes.
Correct.
I guess in order to be fair to everybody, would you be willing to obey this for 30 days so your client can take the classes and we can revisit this again?
I think so. I think it's better to get it denied the first time. I mean, I don't have any problem to defer it for 30 days.
And hopefully, there won't be any rental activity during that time.
Of course. We know that.
Well, my motion would be to obey it for 30 days and let your client take classes and have him come back and make a presentation to us.
All right. Do you want us to meet with the, with the neighbors too?
Yes, I would like that, yes.
Okay. We will meet with them, we will try to contact them. I don't know if I can get a list of the people that is having complaints against it, so we can directly contact them. Of course, we will try to contact all of them around it, but it will be better if we have the, specifically, the persons that are trying to, to have an issue with it.
Yeah, I would like that, I would like that to be official, to meet with the neighbors. Maybe you can get together with staff, and they can help you get a list and let you know what you're supposed to do.
All right. Okay.
So that would be my motion to obey it for 30 days.
Thank you very much.
Till November, excuse me, November 27th, so there's a motion on the floor for a ban. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, please note a yes or a per Commissioner Schlotman?
Noted. Edgar, so you know that that, that motion carries? Director, do we need to?
No, Mr. Chairman. Since that's obeyed, that's just obeyed to the 27th. Continue to work with staff to get the information to do the neighborhood meeting.
Right. I don't, I don't, I don't need to do anything else, right? We just need to show up on the, November 27th after we do all this.
You, you need to organize a neighborhood meeting that the, the commissioner has requested.
Correct.
And then, yes, you need to be back on the 27th to present your, your case for the SUP.
All right.
I would also suggest bringing the certificate for the completion of the course.
All right. Good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on to item number 22, SUP 74281, applicant owner Nigest Sagai, for possible action action and request for special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental use with a waiver to allow a 374-foot distance separation for similar use, from a similar use which 660 feet is required at 1807 South Eighth Street, Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The applicant is proposing to operate a seven-bedroom short-term residential use. There are four other short-term rental, rental units within the required distance separation of 660 feet. Due to the required waiver, staff has recommended denial of the use as incompatible. Deputy Planning Director Mary McLachlan has additional information pertaining to this item. Thank you.
There has been no code enforcement activity identified or short-term rental activity either. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize if I didn't pronounce the name properly, but can I get your name and address for the record?
That's okay. N'Gest Sagai is my name. I go by Nikki. And 1807 South Eighth Street, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you.
Yes, this is very, very, very important to me. The reason why I wanna do this is because I represent about forty thousand Ethiopians, East Africans here in Las Vegas. I do have a radio program under nonprofit. This place is gonna be used to make sure if this immigrants come from Africa, which is, I was one of them twenty-five years ago, since I'm blessed, I wanna open up an opportunity to make sure that if they have any shelter or anything, job placement. I funded the radio. I do a lot of stuff for the community here, forty thousand Ethiopians. I think not only I'm gonna remodel this very distressed property as one of the largest property in that area, the, the, most of them are very old and smaller properties under Airbnb, but this is gonna help me support more of my people and anybody that needs it with no restriction. And this would be very, very important to me if you guys forgive the distance waiver. And I have a support who's worked so hard with us in the community, Philome Chavanes.
I need your name and address for the record if you'd like to say.
My address is 3854 Sanrio Cristo Avenue.
And your name, sorry?
Philome Chavanes.
Could you spell your last name for us?
C-H-A-V-A-N-N-E-S.
Thank you, Philome.
Little nervous, I'm not used to public speaking.
No problem.
I'm gonna be me, okay? Relax. I'm here on her behalf. I'm also owner of the property as well. She has a nonprofit foundation and.
Could you come a little closer to them?
Sorry. She has a nonprofit foundation and we're gonna have representatives and people that are coming abroad and this foundation is also to help over forty thousand Ethiopians here in our community. As far as the property, one of, some of the things that I wanna mention, we flip houses part-time. We own a property right behind the mall. Some of you are probably familiar with that property 'cause it was a crack house. Okay? It's behind the Maryland Parkway Mall. It's the most beautiful house. It's a yellow house. It's 3606 Algonquin. If you're familiar with that area behind there, that yellow house, okay? I refurbished that house. That landscape, I did it with my own hands. So whoever took the picture of this house that we're trying to do, the Airbnb in, I don't know if you had the pictures of that house before in that neighborhood. St. Louis is right down the street from Stratosphere and Eighth Street, okay? Those are wonderful people. But a lot of these people, they're older, their houses are getting bought out, the whole neighborhood has become Airbnb. Two out of three properties Airbnb. One of the reasons that we bought that property is to enhance the foundation and help people out. Now, what I promised you to the property, it was a picture up here of the property and there was a picture up here on the screen. This property is totally ready for Airbnb, but I didn't wanna disrespect the commission, the chairman and the community, so we did not break any rules. We have seven bathrooms, seven bedrooms. Each room has its own. LD has sprinklers on, in it. It has a balcony in the back that you can see the whole beautiful view of the city. Okay? I'm gonna bring in engineers, okay? On the flat roof in the front, make it beautiful. The place right now in the picture looks beautiful 'cause I cleaned it up about two months ago. We've owned this property for over a year. On our block, there's about eight houses. They all need restoration. There's nothing but investors buying that neighborhood. I think this is gonna be great for the city. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with the house on Sixth and Franklin. It is gorgeous. That's the way I designed. If you've seen the house, the yellow house, this young lady here seem like she's seen the yellow house, she's familiar with it. I saw you shaking your head. That is exactly what I'm going to do to that property. You might stay there one night 'cause rooms are very expensive. So please allow us, give us the permission to fix the neighborhood, to make things look beautiful and you will be very proud of me. So let me make our community look good. This is Donna from the Stratosphere. Two out of three houses are that. If anybody was doing the same thing that she's trying to do opposes, why would you oppose if you're doing the same thing? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your.
I just wanna say one more. Oh, it has a separate laundry room. It's gonna have its own lobby as well. And as I was saying, number eighteen, she's on 1901 East St. Louis, so she's technically my neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. This was notice as a public hearing and anyone from the public like to be heard. Seeing no one from the public, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Schlottman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that I'm coming for today and giving us the testimony. This is another one of the houses really close to Beverly Green and I'm shocked they don't have Mr. Fiddler and Mr. Brown and the usual grab off there. But I mean, basically when I come down, I'll say what I always have, I know it's Giant Park or come to Marycrust, Beverly Green or any of these other neighborhoods, get on, I hope we have the city parents in protocol and I'm scanning the house and pick it up, pick it up, cheap house in that neighborhood and put a lot of money into it. So, I mean, based on that, I, I have heard that plenty that would allow me to change from how I've lived the past year and a half.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlottman. You know, I'll add on and say, you know, we're land use board, so appreciate everything you presented, what you did and, or what you're doing. But I will say, seeing seven houses in the area and, and you know, as far as a short-term rental comes for this, someone comes from, I guess Addis Ababa or somewhere and they're coming, it isn't for a night. You know, it's, you're trying to get them here in, into our community for probably more than thirty days, which you wouldn't need, and correct me if I'm wrong, a short-term rental license to do. Is that correct?
Thirty-one days or longer.
Thirty-one days or longer. So I feel like you can still go towards the cause of what you're trying to do, but again, with everything that's in the neighborhood and the crickets that are chirping, that, is that really right? That it's just something that I, I won't be able to, to support with that many. Again, echoing what Commissioner Schlottman said, as far as what we've, what I've historically done in this neighborhood as well. Commissioner Toussaint?
Well, I'm very familiar with this neighborhood. I went to John S. Park. I grew up in this neighborhood. I lived on St. Louis and I agree with, with Commissioner Schlottman, that 660 rule is just a killer and I, I can't go past that. I wish I could. I think what you're doing is amazing. Fix up the house, you know, rent it out for a long period of time. Unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to support your application tonight, but I do support what you're doing with helping in this community. I love the John S. Park area. I lived there in 1953 when I first moved to town with my folks. So I'm sorry that I can't support your application.
Commissioner Schlottman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I do support the, I mean, the city parents in protocol. It was, now I have three hundred and seventy-four feet. So I would like to make a motion on item number twenty-two, SUP 74281. I will move to follow as recommendation for now.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, we, we, we've closed the portion. I apologize. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk's office within ten days.
We will. Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on to item number, excuse me, twenty-three, SUP 74282, applicant Ilana Wong, owner LLP, Las Vegas Limited Co. for possible action and request for a special use permit.
That's a baby.
Oh, I apologize. Fantastic. Moving on to director's business, item number twenty-four, text 74695, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action and request to amend LVMC Title 19, Appendix F, Interim Downtown Las Vegas Development Standards to remove and replace references to the Las Vegas Medical District Plan with references to Title 1909, Form-Based Code, amend the DTLVO area maps and to provide further related matters. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The text amendment seeks to remove the administration of development standards from the Las Vegas Medical District Pilot Plan area from the interim downtown Las Vegas development standards and places that administration of the development standards within the newly adopted Title 1909. The areas, the areas located outside of the Las Vegas Medical District Pilot Plan area but still located within the Las Vegas Medical District will remain governed as Area Two of the interim downtown Las Vegas development standards until the Las Vegas Medical District Pilot Plan area has been determined to expand to the full district boundaries or if it moves forward at all. With that, staff is recommending approval. Thank you.
Okay. This was notice as a public hearing and anyone from the public like to be heard? Bless you. Bless you. Can you name an address for the record, please?
Good evening, Chairman Cherry and fellow commissioners. Justin Michaels, 820 Rancho Lane, Suite 8589106. I'm here before you on item twenty-four because I have grave concerns about the city's recent sudden pivot on the medical district and the form-based code. Since the spring of 2017, we'd been continually informed that the form-based code was coming forward and all property owners, both on the north and south side of Charleston, needed to plan accordingly. Then this past summer, three days after we were informed by the city that there was gonna be a taking that occurs on both sides of Charleston between Rancho and I-15, the city pivoted and said the south side is no longer in the medical district going forward. My concern is that the city is trying to mitigate their financial exposure on the taking by devaluing the properties on the south side of Charleston by not including them in the new medical district as it relates to the form-based code. I think it's only appropriate at this juncture that the city holds all items related to the form-based code and, and the medical district, going back with the old version, not incorporating the new one that's proposed before you tonight until the taking is completed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public like to be heard? Seeing no else, we will close the public hearing. Turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Roush?
Thank you. First, I need to start by saying that I do own property in the medical district. I don't have an opinion one way or the other on form-based code or Title 19. Whatever the city ends up deciding, I will abide by. It doesn't really affect me one way or the other, so I will be voting tonight. Secondly, my question of staff is the, it's not the applicant, the, Justin Michaels has said that the city is taking portions of the north and south side of Charleston. Are we doing an actual imminent domain taking or is he referring to just the fact that the reclassification of the property results in a taking? I'm just, I'm looking for a little clarification and Chairman, if you would indulge whether he says that or staff, it's up to you. I just want an answer.
Yeah, please.
Mr. Chairman, through you, so Commissioner, independent of any of the activity related to the form-based code, the city is a part of the mobility master plan identified that Charleston is in need of some upgrades to improve pedestrian accessibility as well as some other issues. So as a part of that, they are investigating and beginning the process of identifying possible transportation-related takings. So to be clear, it's not a regulatory taking. It would be working with those property owners, hopefully not as a taking, but as a negotiated sell, but ultimately it could get to a taking for right-of-way purposes along Charleston Boulevard. Again, those, those are conversations that are independent of the form-based code and just since you did mention that, I do wanna be, make sure that everyone on the council or on the planning commission is aware. The city council did adopt Title 1909 at their last meeting. The, the new form-based code chapter is an official part of the Unified Development Code and this amendment that's before you tonight is to clean up what ends up happening once the, provided that the rezoning completes itself, that this would create duplicative standards. So we want to remove the outdated references and the outdated standards now that Title 1909 has been adopted by the city council.
Thank you for the clarification and I think I mentioned this the last time we voted on form-based code before it advanced to city council, that I do find it curious and a little bit strange that we make one side of Charleston on the north side, form-based code, and the south side, we did, we did actually pivot a different direction. I didn't, but the, the city and staff and I guess city council decided to keep the south side under Title 19. I find it incongruent when you've got a street as busy as Charleston, you've got rightaways coming on both sides and it's not governed by the same document. So I guess I would agree with Mr. Michaels' comment that I just find it strange from a planning and zoning and land use point of view, from my history in the city and doing real estate, it's just, it, it kinda creates a haves and have-not scenario in terms of one side of the street's in and one side of the street's out on what is supposed to be our most important medical corridor in town. It's supposed to be what Mayor Protem Tarkanian has always said is the crown jewel of her ward and she's always wanted this to be something that would be really an exemplary legacy for her to create the medical school, to do all of these master plan moves within that corridor in that area. I'm concerned specifically because I think that it will create a disproportionate land use scenario on the south side that, for lack of a better term, will junk it up. I mean, I think that you're gonna have a lot of, I, I mean, the whole purpose of the form-based code is to create compatible uses and to create an overlay of, of transects where you can have compatible uses that complement one another and that will be beautiful to look at as you go down the street. I mean, that's one of the things that the form-based code uses as a hallmark is that you'll have certain setbacks, you'll have certain landscaping requirements, you'll have certain sidewalk requirements. And so from my point of view, I see this as a big mistake to orphan the south side of the street. So that's just my comments for the record. You may disagree, but that's how I feel.
I, I do have a, a question for the director. So I look at the map and I see the blue, which is the medical district, and then I see to the south of Charleston is the green designated as Area Two. Is that Area Two still, that's form-based code, adopted as form-based code now or it is not?
Mr. Chairman, so, no. So the map you're looking at is Exhibit A for those in the viewing public or audience. And so the, the blue that you see is the area that is covered by development standards. So in this case, with the adoption of the form-based code, the pilot area of the medical district, which is east of Rancho, north of Charleston, and then up the MLK corridor, that area will now be governed by Title 1909, provided the rest of the, the process works its way through. And then you see the other, like, the, the little island in there, which is Symphony Park, which is governed by the Symphony Park Design Guidelines. So the south side of Charleston and the east, or the west side of Rancho, which have been not orphaned, in fact, they've been adopted into the medical district as a part of the latest iteration of the downtown master planning process. They just are not at this time being incorporated into the form-based code because the request of members of the council was that they wanted to test out the pilot. So those will continue to operate under Area Two, which are the interim downtown development standards for areas of downtown that were not previously a part of the downtown centennial plan.
So what happens in Area Two and the, let's say it's, it's, the arts district is, is green and the west Charleston, south of the medical interim is green. So if the arts district goes to the form-based code and that's finally adopted, is that saying that Area Two underneath and adjacent to the medical district would be the same standard as the arts district?
No. So I wanna be clear. So the, the ultimate goal of staff and of the program that we've been working on is that everything on this map will turn blue, meaning that it will all be covered under the form-based code eventually. The arts district is actually in the red area. It's in Area One because it was previously covered by the downtown centennial plan.
You're right. I apologize.
Only those areas that are green are areas that were added to the downtown master plan that weren't previously a part of the centennial plan and therefore are covered under the standard Title 19 zoning rules. And so that, that's why you have the three colors. You have red, which is the old centennial plan area, which has different requirements and allowances that were established as a part of the centennial plan. You have the blue, which are covered by a specific plan document in the case of Symphony Park or now by Title 1909, in the case of the medical district pilot area. And then you have area, the, the final is the green, which is the area that's been added to the planning area, but because we have not adopted the new stand. to the planning area, but because we have not adopted the new standards for that area, are still covered by base Title 19 standards.
Okay, well, and I guess we've kind of gone back and forth in the past on this and I still, you know, I see UNLV on the south in the building right now. Is that correct? I believe, isn't that through a tenant into the south?
Yes, I believe that UNLV is a part of one of the larger office buildings as well as some of, some of the smaller office buildings on the south side.
And I know there was, you know, there's a push for the medical school from UNLV, through UNLV on the north side, and I just, I drive by this every day and the last thing I'd like to see, and I'm sure anyone, is just a kind of broken corridor because the corridor really lends itself, as you're driving visually, getting off a major freeway to be something special for when someone comes in town to go to the medical district. It'd be strange to me to get off on Charleston, on the right side you see clear, beautiful designation of what the area is, and to my left, I see something that is just off. And I guess you can argue, well, you just can't have it everywhere, but this is a small sliver adjacent to residential that I was hoping too would give more clarity to the residents on what could fit there, what couldn't fit there. So I think I'm still in the same place as before, is making the recommendation that they add in these areas, so that's what I'm... Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear so that there's, there's no misunderstanding. As these amendments have moved forward to, to the city council for their consideration, it has been conveyed that the Planning Commission continues to have concerns about piloting the form-based code on the north side of Charleston and not including the south side at this time. However, that's just the direction of the, the council has gone, is that they want to see the pilot have time to succeed before they move beyond the boundaries that they've established at this time.
I understand, and I appreciate you keeping the city council in the loop with what the commission has historically voted on or commented about, but, I mean, we are a recommended body, and as I sit here, that's how I feel as far as a recommendation is. And while you've done a horrible job or a great job, it's just, from what I see, it's, it just doesn't flow for me, so Commissioner Toussaint?
Yeah, I agree with you, Commissioner Cherry and with Commissioner Roush. I just think this is inconsistent, I really do. And I'm confused, and I believe that this part of Charleston should be included. I just don't understand why it's not. I think it's such a small parcel that we should all be including. I realize that this is a process, but I'm in the same place I was the last time we were here. So I think I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
Commissioner Schlobman, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, they all come with the order of the name.
Okay, anyone like to make a motion? Commissioner Roush?
Can I just ask before the motion, can I get clarification on exactly what we're voting on? We're voting on an amendment to the form-based code and to Title 1909 to make the south side of Charleston still governed by Title 19 and the north side the form-based code. Is that correct? I just want to make sure we know what we're voting on.
No, no, through you, Mr. Chairman. That, actually, what you're voting on now, that part is already, what you just described is already done essentially with the council vote with regard to Title 1909. This is a cleanup item. Now that 1909 has been adopted by the city council, we now have overlapping regulations in the pilot area. And so this is the first step in removing the duplicative, out-of-date standards and regulations from that area so that we don't have two sets of regulations technically competing against each other over the same geography.
So how would we have two sets of regulations competing against each other if the south side of Charleston is still under Title 19 and the north side of Charleston is the form-based code? Or did you approve the form-based code on the south side of Charleston and now you're trying to clean it up and remove it? I really want to understand what's going on.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, the south side of Charleston is not touched by the form-based code at, through any action that we've taken formally. Through the drafting process, yes, the south side of Charleston was included in our drafting, it was included in our modeling because, in all honesty, we thought we were going to be doing the full medical district as a part of the form-based code's first district. However, through work with the council offices and with the community immediately to the south of the south side of Charleston, it was determined that initially, because this is a new concept for the city of Las Vegas, we would do a pilot area with just the original medical district and the, the portion of the medical district on the, of the new medical district up the MLK corridor at the request of the councilman for Ward 5. So that's where we're at. This does not touch the south side of Charleston one way or the other.
Okay.
It cleans up duplicative regulations.
I got that part, and I'm, I'm clear, and you've repeated what you said before, the part that I didn't hear, and maybe I don't get it and I don't understand. Sometimes I'm a little dense, so help me understand, what are we specifically voting on to amend? What are we changing? What are we amending?
So again, prior to the adoption of 1909, the area that's governed by the pilot, the medical district pilot area was, if you're looking at the map that you're looking at, it was a mix of blue and green because the core of the medical district was covered by the old medical district plan. Again, that area, that box, if you would, east of Rancho, north of Charleston, south of Alta, that was covered by the medical district plan. So this eliminates the medical district plan from governing that part. Then, north of Alta, along the MLK corridor, that area was identified as green on this map because that was governed by Title 19 base zoning standards, which will no longer apply because, again, provided that the GPA and the zoning go through, that will be now covered by 1909. That's, that's what you're changing. You're changing essentially colors on a map to identify which area of the downtown master plan area is covered by a, the interim standards, by Title 19 base standards, and now by a Title 1909 for the form-based code in the pilot area, or in the case of Symphony Park, the Symphony Park Design Standards.
Okay, well, shoot me if you want to, but you're talking in circles. So basically what you're saying is that we're voting for colors on the map and the south part of Charleston doesn't apply. But what you just finished saying is that the south side of Charleston is being voted on today to stay green. So to me, that means that the south side of Charleston is being orphaned or bastardized into the later plan, much later, we don't know when, but we're voting everything north of Charleston to be blue and the stuff north of Alta now to be blue, which might have been green before. It doesn't matter, I'm not in favor of it. I don't want to orphan the south side of Charleston. I'll be voting no because I can't make sense of what you're saying. So when in doubt, do without. I'm voting no. Bye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Schlobman?
May I, if I can follow up? Just a question for Director Sondland. I know you've said a lot of stuff, but basically this takeaway, where the title on the team's own standard, and then the new form-based code, any boundaries are being determined, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, correct. So the boundary, no boundaries are changing as a result of this. We're simply, through this action, identifying the governing document, if you would, because currently, the medical district plan applies over the previous medical district, which is now considered the core medical district, and Title 19 standards apply along the corridor north of Alta on Martin Luther King. We're not changing any colors or any regulatory approach with this for any of the properties south of Charleston or west of Rancho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So basically, everyone didn't vote on and pass at the last meeting or meeting before, and we determined to vote, vote that, touchdown because we didn't leave the boundaries that were presented to us. That was per the council, so we're not doing that today. I mean, basically, we were not voting on the south side of, on the south side of Charleston.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone like to make a motion? Commissioner DeSavie, would you like to make a motion?
I will. And I just, before I do, I just want to, for my own thought, this is a language cleanup for repetitiveness or overlap, from what I'm saying, because you just said that earlier in the month, or this, maybe a week or so ago, that the city council had already approved the north side of the street being form-based code, south side of the street being Title 19, that's already a done deal. What we're doing now, basically here on this vote, is cleaning up the text to make sure that the, the overlap basically goes away.
Mr. Chairman, through you. So I apologize if I'm unclear on this, but I do want to make sure for the record. So what the council voted on was to adopt the form-based code standards, which included a map that identified this area. So yes, in that part, we are cleaning up, but the city council has not yet voted on a rezoning that would apply those standards to this district. So there are, there is still a step. In fact, this board has not heard that rezoning application, although it has heard the General Plan Amendment, and that General Plan Amendment would be moving on to city council. So there's still actions to take place before all those regulations apply. But yes, at its core, this is to clean up, now that the city council has adopted the form-based code, Title 1909, and identified the pilot area as a part of that adoption, this would provide the cleanup mechanism so that we don't have multiple regulations applying to the same area.
Okay, I'm fine with that. So then, if that's, if that's what this is, then I'll make a motion for approval to clean up that language on item number 24, TAX 74695.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, did we make a note that Commissioner Schlobman voted?
Noted. He said yes, correct. And that motion is a tie. So does that go on to city council?
So I think technically, procedurally, we can entertain a motion in the opposite since it's, it's essentially a denial, but, so I think procedurally, we're supposed to ask for a, someone who voted to not approve that motion to make the alternative motion. If that then ends in a denial, then, or in a tie, then it'll go forward to council with the denial recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. And Commissioner Roush?
Oh, I was ready to make a motion, but if you have a comment, then please.
Well, no, I, listen, and I, and I realize it's very clear what staff's doing with trying to clean up the language. I understand that, and it's, city council has changed something in the past that we recommended based on their, what they factored in. I'm just still in the stance, it isn't a, of voting no because I just don't, you know, in concept. I understand it's just a cleanup, but I just hope that my vote goes on to city council and is heard in a different way, so. No offense to anyone on staff. Can I get a motion, please?
Yeah, so with that as a backdrop, and I think the three of us that voted no, who I assume will vote the other way when I make this motion to approve this, I'm sorry, to deny this, with the backdrop that I'm just not willing to put the nails in the coffin on the south side of Charleston, and that's what this would do. And so I'd like to send a message to the council that I'd really like them to take this all into consideration. Whether they will or not, obviously, we know is not in our power. But with that said, I would like to make a motion for denial of Tax Amendment 74695 to deny.
Most on the floor, please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, we made a no vote for Commissioner Schlobman.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlobman. And that is a tie vote again. We should do it again, just one more time, just so...
So, Mr. Chairman, with that, it will move forward to city council in ordinance form with a denial recommendation from the city council.
Thank you, Director. Moving on to citizens' participation. Citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject can be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion of any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah. Richard Shusedale, 820 Rancho Lane, Suite 85. I just, I've, I've heard the director speak a couple times as if planning works in a vacuum and doesn't understand that there's a potential taking on Charleston. In fact, I heard him mention it at a meeting before, that he really wasn't aware of any of the taking information. And I, I respect him a lot, but if there's pressure to push this through the system, that's fine, and we all have to make decisions, we all serve a lot of masters. But we received letters from Valbridge on July 27. I met with Bill Snyder in the city's right-of-way department on August 27, and he told me, not only are we not taking a little bit of your property, we're going to have a full taking on an existing building. And the drawings were done almost nine months ago, approved drawings. They gave me a copy of the drawings. So please, don't be disingenuous and say you're not aware of the taking. If you're the director of planning, my God, you better know that there's a taking that's going to affect the land values and the development rights that are going along Charleston. And then to have the councilwoman's office have an epiphany not wanting us to be included is, to reiterate what my associate said, a direct attempt to mitigate, to reduce values on the south side of Charleston. And that is wrong, is potentially illegal, but you guys have to do what you have to do as staff, and the city attorney has to do what they have to do, but most of the planning commissioners understand that this is a sham to delete the south side of Charleston. And it was, when it went to the city council, it was already in a limited form. They couldn't, they weren't allowed to consider bringing it back in. In fact, you made it very clear at the meeting, they weren't allowed to bring that back in at the request. So the decisions have been made, we don't, I don't care at this point what you guys do, but when you're trying to, well, as the councilwoman says, she wants a legacy, she wants to point her finger at something she did in her lifetime, my God, you don't do half the street and turn the other half into a blighted area for one to six years, depending on what happens. This form-based code was presented to the development community to create an, a opportunity for developers to develop, not for developers not to develop, and that's what you've turned it into. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public like to be heard on this? Director, did you have something that you wanted to add to the last?
I apologize, yes, I do need to make a clarification. I, I forgot, on tax amendments, actually, when you do end in a tie vote on both motions, they go forward as no recommendation from the Planning Commission. My apologies, on other items, it would have been tantamount to a denial, but in this case, since you failed to come to resolution, it is a no recommendation.
Thank you for the clarity on that. Okay, seeing or hearing from nobody else, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.